Row. Bagley. Harding. Hug. Johnson. Melton. Mr. President.
Here. Please rise for the pledge and remarks by Councilmember Don Rowe.
I don't have a lot of comments today. Welcome to spring in Nebraska. Who would have thought two weeks ago we were at seventy low temperatures? And the rest of the week it's fifty and above. So it's a great place to live. It is a great place to live. Omaha is a great place to live, and I appreciate the people that we work for. I ran into a gentleman a couple of weeks ago, and he said, you know, he said, I just want to let you know that I have a group of people. His name is David Klaasner. He goes, I've got a group of people, men and women, that come down to City Hall every Tuesday, and we pray for you. He said, we pray for the county board, we pray for the mayor, we pray for the city council. And I said, wow, I appreciate that. That's, that's good news. You know, we need wisdom, we need, you know, the things that they're praying for. I saw him today at ten thirty after I was coming out of pre-council and saw him in the hallway. And he said, just want to let you know, we were here today, we're praying for you. And he gave me a sheet of eight bullet points that they specifically pray. And I'm not going to read through them, but I just want you to know, I for one appreciate that, and I know the rest of us up here do as well. It's, it's good to know that people are considering the wisdom that we need, the decision-making that we need to do, all for the best of the city of Omaha. So thank you, David, and your team.
Thank you. And before we start too, I wanted to mention something that Councilmember Melton did a nice job mentioning this morning, but I think it bears repeating here this afternoon too. We had the passing of a fellow colleague from the city, Alan Thielen, who was a former deputy city attorney just in the last few days. He'll be missed greatly, of course, by his colleagues. I know I worked with him, as did several councilmembers did previously. Very professional, always kind, and that's how I'll remember him. I think we may have a more formal discussion about him and his life with his family here in the chambers. And services have been set now for Thursday night at Cathedral and also Friday at Cathedral for those that are interested in attending. So just wanted to make sure we mentioned him today. Madam Clerk.
An affidavit publication is on file for the pre-council and city council meeting, and a current copy of the meeting act is posted in a white binder on the East twelve legislative chambers.
Councilmembers, it's come to my attention that our diocese is not working appropriately in terms of our Zoom access and in terms of the overhead. And the folks that were here to address items six, seven, and eight, and other liquor licenses were here to be, intended to be here by Zoom. So I'm not aware of any opposition to these licenses or any issues with them. I might suggest if folks are amenable to it that we waive liquor rule six, which allows them not to have to be here for those votes.
Move to waive rule six.
Second.
Motion, a second, to waive rule six. Roll call.
Row. Bagley. Harding. Hug. Johnson. Melton. Mr. President.
Yes.
Motion passed, seven to zero. Item six, to consider class CCS liquor license for Johnny Tees Bars and Blues located at 3825 North 30th Street.
Public hearing and vote on number six is today. Proponents, please. Seeing none, any opponents? Public hearing is closed. Ms. Johnson, you're recognized.
Thank you, Mr. President. I move to make the recommendation.
There's a motion, a second to approve. Roll call.
Row. Bagley. Harding. Hug. Johnson. Melton. Mr. President.
Yes.
Motion passed, seven to zero. Item seven, to consider a class B liquor license for Family Dollar, 30197, located at 1901 North 72nd Street.
Public hearing and vote on number seven is today. Proponents, please. Seeing none, any opponents? Public hearing is closed. Motion, a second to approve. Roll call.
Row. Bagley. Harding. Hug. Johnson. Melton. Mr. President.
Yes.
Motion passed, seven to zero. Item eight, to consider a change of location liquor license application for Saddle Creek Breakfast Club to locate to 8734 Pacific Street.
Public hearing and vote on number eight is today. Proponents, please. Seeing none, any opponents? Public hearing is closed.
Second.
Motion, a second to approve. Roll call.
Row. Bagley. Harding. Hug. Johnson. Melton. Mr. President.
Yes.
Motion passed, seven to zero. Items nine through eleven can be considered together for Iron Bluff South, located southeast of George B. Lake Parkway and I Street. Planning Board and Planning Department recommend approval. Item nine, an ordinance to rezone this property from AG District to R5 District. Item ten, a resolution to approve the final plot. Item eleven, a resolution to approve the subdivision agreement.
Public hearing and vote on items nine, ten, and eleven are today. Proponents, please. Thank you. Apparently the microphone's not working either, huh? All right. Okay.
Better?
All right, there you go. Maybe it was tall enough, it wasn't picking you up.
Maybe, sorry.
All right, thanks. Any other proponents that want to speak to these items today? Seeing none, any opponents? Public hearing is closed. There's a motion, a second to approve. Roll call.
Row. Bagley. Harding. Hug. Johnson. Melton. Mr. President.
Yes.
Motion passed.
Thanks, everybody.
Thank you.
Item twelve, an ordinance to mend the boundaries of the MCC Overly District. To incorporate into that district, the property located southeast of 61st and Maple Streets. Planning Board and Planning Department recommend approval.
Public hearing and vote on number twelve is today. Proponents, please. Seeing none, any opponents? Public hearing is closed. Councilmembers, this is in my district, and I'm supportive of it. It's Dundee Bank moving into Benson. So welcome Dundee Bank to Benson. Motion, a second. Roll call.
Row. Bagley. Harding. Hug. Johnson. Melton. Mr. President.
Yes.
Motion passed, seven to zero. Item thirteen, an ordinance to mend the boundaries of the ACI four Overly District. To incorporate into that district, the property located northeast of Riverfront Drive and Gallup Drive. Planning Board and Planning Department recommend approval.
Public hearing and vote on number thirteen is today. Proponents, please.
Douglas Streason, 10836 Old Mill Road. Appearing on behalf of the applicant to answer any questions you may have. Thank you.
Thank you. Any other proponents? Seeing none, any opponents? Public hearing is closed. Ms. Johnson.
Motion to approve?
There's a motion and a second to approve. Mr. Streason? Just a question for you. So Councilmember Johnson and I were just in a meeting where we talked about this case a little bit. This is the property that's proposed for the new soccer stadium, correct?
I don't know that for sure. I think this is, it's an ACI. I think it's just kind of a cleanup of some property that's being combined. But it may be, you may be correct.
Okay. I believe that, I believe that to be the case, not that it can't proceed under current ownership anyway, but just thought I'd ask that question.
Okay.
All right. And I don't think it negatively impacts the thought process or the announcement there. I just wanted to clarify that question.
As I understand it, it's just to get uniformity amongst the property, get the ACI over all the property, and then whatever happens from there. I'm not privy to it this time.
Gotcha. Thank you. There's a motion, a second to approve. Roll call.
Row. Bagley. Harding. Hug. Johnson. Melton. Mr. President.
Yes.
Motion passed.
Thank you.
Thanks.
Consent agenda. Any member of the city council may cause any item placed on the consent agenda to be removed. Items removed from the consent agenda shall be taken up by the city council immediately following the consent agenda in the order in which they were removed unless otherwise provided by the city council rules of order.
Public hearings on agenda items fourteen through twenty-seven were held on January 23rd. I don't see any further lights. There's a motion, a second to approve. Roll call.
Row. Bagley. Harding. Hug. Johnson. Melton. Mr. President.
Yes.
Motion passed, seven to zero.
The public hearings on agenda items twenty-eight through forty are today. If you wish to address the city council regarding these items, please come to the microphone, indicate the agenda item number you wish to address, identify yourself by name, address, and who you represent. And if you are a proponent or an opponent, this is items twenty-eight through forty.
Sorry, my first time with something like this. I'm with twenty-eight, twenty-eight, I'm Douglas Long.
Yes. We're on that item. If you want to just give your name and address and then talk about whatever it is you want to testify on?
Douglas Long, address 3524 North 176 Plaza, Omaha, Nebraska. And I'm just the new manager for Bolero Elkhorn.
Great, so that's number twenty-eight, correct?
Okay, yep.
All right, thank you. Thanks for being here. Any other testifiers?
I'm the short one. Tammy Wright, Therapy Bar and Grove, Wrightware LLC. Item number thirty, address 5059 South 108th Street for manager position. Any questions you need to ask, I can answer.
Great, thank you. Any other testifiers on these items? Please come down.
Item number thirty-one, GX Mini-Mart applying for manager applications.
Thank you. And your address?
Eighty-three twenty Blondes Street.
Thank you. Anyone else on items twenty-eight through forty?
Thank you.
Thank you. Seeing none, public hearings are closed. Ms. Melton, you're recognized.
Thank you. I just, I wanted to give a thank you on item number thirty-eight to the Parks Department, Matt Kalsovich, who's worked very hard on this over the last couple of months. And I just want to note, the bids came in below X, below what we expected. So not only is Willowood going to get a makeover in that common area, I want to remind people Willowood is a neighborhood that is very unusual in our city because it has so much common ground. And it's common ground that actually the city has had a hard time keeping up with because a lot of it they can't get to. Because it's behind people's houses, people have built fences. But I think I've gone over the game plan with Parks, and it was pretty amazing, Matt, what the Parks Department was able to do in looking at the whole area, putting together a plan, and kind of also a how-to. Then they were able to specify the bid, and the bid came in. We were thinking it was going to be closer to fifty thousand, and it's come in at thirty-five thousand seven hundred. So, Matt, do you have any comments?
Matt Kalsovich, Parks and Recreation Director. Yeah, we're very excited and thank you again for your support of this action. We think it's going to make a tremendous difference. And as I mentioned to you in another communication, we think we'll be able to do some second and third level things to really just, again, make it that much better a system and a function there to take care of that area.
Yeah, it was something that, that we needed for a long time, and it really wasn't something we could do with just normal maintenance. So I thank you, Matt, for, for the extra work from you and your department on this.
Thank you.
And I'll, I'll move to approve these agenda items.
Do you have someone in the queue that we're ignoring?
Yep. Anyone can motion at any time, and there's a motion, a second to approve. And now you're next in the queue, so Ms. Johnson, you're recognized.
Item number twenty-eight, I'm just exercising due diligence. Can we evaluate the financial obligations to the city of this applicant? Do we have that information available? Are they current on their financial obligations? In other words, do they owe anything to the city of Omaha?
I think, Ms. Butler can answer that question, right?
Yeah, they are current.
Item number thirty, is that?
They are current as well.
And item number thirty-one, their financial responsibility, do they owe anything to the city of Omaha?
I believe they're current as well.
Okay. And then we have item number thirty-seven. We have a bid here. Question for anyone that would like to answer this question. Although, make no mistake about it, I do know who is responsible for answering the questions. How many applications were received for this bid?
Matt Kalsovich, Parks and Recreation Director. I do not have that information on me at this time. I can retrieve that at a later point, but was not requested for that information prior to the meeting. This was the lowest bid.
Okay, in the future, we need to, I, I need to see that information for, for me to make an intelligent decision, please. Where was this bid advertised?
Matt Kalsovich, Parks and Recreation Director. This bid followed our normal process through the purchasing department, so all of the regular locations where things are posted for local bidders.
So we have no list of who, where this was advertised?
I don't have that in front of me. I can pull that together for reference to you at another time.
I'd appreciate that because I want to make sure that opportunities exist for my district as well. Thank you.
Thank you. Ms. Melton.
The, the bids are actually attached to the agenda item, so it's right here. I just thought I'd answer the question. This was the lowest.
Ms. Melton, the question was not for you, it was for the Parks Department.
Well, but I thought for the public, since the question was asked, I could answer it for everybody here.
I just want to make it on the record.
Ms. Melton does have the floor at the moment.
That, that question was not directed at Ms. Melton, it was directed at the Parks Department.
All right. Ms. Melton, the floor is yours still?
Thank you. The, there were two bids that were received on November first of 2023. The lowest bid was BKM Construction. It's on the agenda for two-hundred-and-forty-three thousand nine fifty-two. The second bid that was received was from Elkhorn West Construction, and it came in at four-hundred-and-seventeen thousand six hundred and fifteen dollars. So again, the Parks Department, I think, got a, got another good bid like I discussed on, on Willowood. I, I think that lowest bid came in a lot lower than the second bid. So thanks to the Parks Department.
Thank you. Ms. Johnson, you're recognized.
Thank you, Ms. Melton, for answering a question that the Parks Department should have had and been able to provide to me when I asked the question.
Thank you. No further lights. There is a motion, a second to approve, twenty-eight through forty. Roll call.
Row. Bagley. Harding. Hug. Johnson.
No. I'm not voting for any other items listed here today.
Melton.
Yes.
Mr. President.
Yes.
Motion passed, six to one. Item forty-one, an ordinance authorizing the issuance of a purchase order to BMI Janitorial Group in the amount of sixty-one thousand four hundred dollars for janitorial services to be utilized by the Street Maintenance Division. Please communication in opposition.
The vote on number forty-one is today. We have some lights in the queue here. Ms. Melton.
Motion to approve. And I'll motion to call the question.
There's a motion to approve and a second. If there's a motion and a second to call the question, we must now take a vote. Is that correct, Madam Clerk?
That is correct.
And if that call the question is approved, then a vote, a vote must occur. Is that correct?
Correct.
Okay.
Can I, can you clarify, please? Question. Is this one vote for the two items?
Two, two votes. One for call the question, and then vote on the actual item.
So question number, the first vote is calling the question.
Correct.
The second one is to vote yes or no on number forty-one.
If call the question prevails.
Understood. Thanks for the clarification.
Can there only be one call of the question on any particular item?
I believe it could be reconsidered. I might have to research. Five votes.
Okay. Is everybody clear about what we're voting on here? Okay. So there is a motion and a second to call the question, and that vote must occur now. Roll call.
Row. Bagley. Harding. Hug. Johnson. Melton.
Yes.
Mr. President.
No.
Hug. Motion failed, three to four.
And there is a motion to approve and a second to, on the floor that has been properly moved, properly seconded. Now we have lights in the queue. Mr. Harding, you're recognized.
I'll yield my time. I'll come back.
Ms. Johnson, you're recognized.
Thank you, Mr. President. During our last city council meeting last week, there were several questions that were asked, and they were pretty much basic questions. As a city council representative, it is my responsibility to seek facts for information so that I can make informed decisions. Unfortunately, last week I was unable to arrive at that destination point for a variety of reasons that, if we can look at history in terms of how various directors choose to answer questions posed by me routinely. Nonetheless, I was, this item was placed on the agenda. There was an opportunity for the Law Department to give me a briefing in advance. They cited that the app, the person in opposition to this had a current lawsuit. Nothing regarding a lawsuit as it relates to this particular item on the agenda. Understanding that this individual has a lawsuit or a law case on other matters has nothing to do with the concern of how this bid was determined. As we can recall, last week I was given the opportunity or was told that I could ask questions later and not in front of the general public. We have a responsibility to be transparent. I don't believe that those questions that I was trying to get an answer or seek information on were of a protective manner, matter. They were basic question. One of them was, what was the role and responsibility of the small, what is the role and responsibility of the human rights and relation as it relates to small and emerging business? As I pointed out, that information is made available on the website. But unfortunately, the Law Department felt the need to intervene and not allow the, the question to be answered by the Human Rights and Relations Department. I did not seek speaking off the record because I too, as a city council representative, have rights. My decision to do what I choose to do is important. My voice is important. And what manner, and what method I choose to obtain information is totally up to me, and it should not be determined by who tells me what to do. As last, last time I checked, slavery days ended some time ago. So on January 23rd, 2023, I sent a email message to Mr. Coosie, and the following was stated. On January 23rd, 2023, during a council, city council meeting, I was limited in obtaining certain facts regarding ordinance 43673 by Ryan Reese, City Law Department. Yes, I was offered to discuss my concerns after the meeting. Was there thought given to this discussion prior to the meeting? If not, we missed an opportunity to work collectively as a team. As a result, my voice was not heard by the Law Department. As an expert in deductive reasoning, I understand the possibility of having different interpretations of a question. Likewise, our responses to questions are based upon history, experience, and/or walks of life. Professionals recognize mishaps or reduce when we ask additional questions. Also, this creates a broader perspective about what is being communicated. In doing so, we all become winners. Going forward, what will we do collectively to ensure that we communicate better? Today, I'm asking, I'm requesting answers to the following questions. One, human rights and relations. What are the roles and responsibility of this department to the small and emerging business program? That is a question that warrants an answer. Because I am oftentimes disrespected for my position as the city council rep, this question remains unanswered. Qualification and experience. What are each bidder's qualification and relevant experience for this project? Again, no answer. I'm a city council representative asking question, and yet this body, these board of directors, choose not to answer the question. Blatantly disregarding my position, may not respect me, but they are blatantly disrespecting my position. Financial stability. Provide information about the financial stability of each bidder. I would assume that, given the other questions, that there will not be an answer to this question. But again, if we looked at, if we looked at the bidders, these are basic questions that whoever evaluated the, the bids should have had those, this information available to them to, to effectively critique who the successful winner would be. References. Provide references from previous clients or project to assess the bidder's track record. Again, information. Again, information when considering the bids should have been collected, should already be a part of this document or attachments that we have as it relates to the resolution. Project plan. Provide details on each bidder's project, proposed project plan, including timeliness, milestones, and deliverables. Compliance. Does each bidder comply with all relevant laws, regulations, and city policy? If so, provide supporting documentation. Cost breakdown. Provide a detailed breakdown of costs to understand how the bid amount was distributed from each bidder. Again, all these are fundamental questions. When we're reviewing a bid, we should have or seek information to obtain answers to these questions. Yet, I can't get that information. Local impact for each bidder. What are their plans to minimize disruptions and any potential impact to the local community? Environmental considerations. What is each bidder's approach to ensure environmental, the environment is protected? Conflict of interest. Are there any potential conflict of interest that might affect the bidder's ability to perform? I've asked ten questions, no response to general questions that should have been considered when the bids were looked at. Doesn't take much to provide me with this information, yet I have not received that information. Thank you, Mr. President.
Thank you. Mr. Harding, you're next in the queue.
I was gonna ask Mr. Weason to come down, but I, I think I'll, I'll say what I was gonna say, and then if, if Mr. Weason or, or Mr. Cousy thinks it needs clarification or, or adjustment, I'll ask him to weigh in. But the reason for the various departments not responding has nothing to do with the lack of respect to you, Ms. Johnson. Not everything is about you. There's been a determination by our legal team, the City of Omaha's Law Department, that there is a potential that discussion on this issue may have an impact or jeopardize a pending lawsuit that the contract, this contractor who's filed the, or who has voiced opposition to this, has filed against the city. You were given plenty of opportunities by Mr. Weason last week to have a privileged client lawyer discussion about the issue. This is not about not being transparent. This is about following good legal advice by our legal team. And you're right, there, you have the right to ask the questions, but by asking those questions, you may jeopardize or expose the city to potential fines or potential harm if there is something that is stated that could be used against the city in the pending lawsuit that I referenced earlier. So, again, I'll ask Mr. Weason or Mr. Cousy if there's anything else that needs to be stated on that, or if I was clear.
Mackenzie, City of Omaha Law Department, I don't have anything to add.
Thank you. Ms. Johnson, you're recognized.
Thank you, Mr. President. Just because a applicant who submitted a bid, whom happens to have a lawsuit that is unrelated to the bid that is before us, does not, does not give permission for the Law Department to take a stance to have all departments not answer these basic questions when determining a bid. There is no basis for a potential lawsuit when answering these questions. If there were, then perhaps we should not have threw out, we should have never submitted the bid until the lawsuits are all cleared up. But we made a decision as the City of Omaha to throw this bid out. Applicants submitted their bid. Various departments had their way in. Basic questions such as what I asked should have been reviewed, considered, answered. They should have been attached to the resolution so that I could review it. It is not feasible or realistic for me to, my schedule is just as busy as the entire Law Department, which consists of twenty-plus employees versus one individual. This Law Department had every opportunity to set up a briefing with me. But unfortunately, because of misunderstandings, reaching for conclusions, the Law Department has taken a stance to play games and obstruct my ability to gain information. So, if the Law Department represents the city and also the city council, then for me to have representation for myself, I would need us to consider getting an outside attorney, someone that can represent me. Because if the expectation is for me to go to the Law Department to seek questions, it will never happen because I need someone in the room to witness that I am being treated fairly. My colleagues are able to reach or talk to this, to the Law Department without a babysitter in the room. Yet, I've, I've been told that I need a babysitter. That is disrespecting my position. Now that we have all the house rules clear and out in the open for everyone to hear and see how we do unfair treatment to one versus the other, and then say that we want an urban core to retract and retain young individuals to the City of Omaha when we have fundamental issues regarding how we communicate with one another daily. Youth are not hung up on these fundamental differences that we have here in the city, here with city council members. I might point out that I am the only African-American sitting here at this city council table. But yet, we have individuals that want to hold me to a standard based upon their walks of life and never appreciate my walk of life. Communication is a two-way street. You give, I give, and we come to a happy medium. We don't always have to agree. We don't always have to know what each other is thinking, but we should give each other a certain amount of respect. And what we have here today is we are not giving me respect which my position entitles me to have. Yes, we're hiding behind a pending lawsuit. Yes, we're hiding by saying the cameras are down, technology is broke. How convenient. Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Harding, you're recognized.
Well, I have a procedural question. Can I call the question again or not? Because we're, we're going through the circular, circular firing squad, and it's gonna go on forever, so.
Yes.
I'll, I'll call the question.
Can't we just do a motion to approve?
There's currently a motion.
There, there's one already on the table to approve, but there are no more, but there are more lights on now, so I'm calling. I, I just said that, Ms. Johnson. Why don't you listen to what I'm saying, please?
Yes, you can call the question again.
Call the question.
Is that properly moved?
Yep, it is.
Motion and a second to call the question. Vote to call the question is now. Roll call.
Roe.
Yes.
Bagley.
Aye.
Harding.
Yes.
Hug.
Yes.
Johnson.
No.
Melton.
Yes.
Mr. President.
Yes.
Hug.
Yes.
Motion passed six to one.
Now, vote must occur on the, on the motion to approve, which was seconded. Roll call.
Roe. Bagley.
Aye.
Harding.
Yes.
Hug. Johnson.
No.
Melton.
Yes.
Mr. President.
Yes.
Motion passed six to one. Item forty-two, an ordinance levying a special tax assessment for Litter Group twenty-twenty-four dash zero-one is amendment of the whole requested by the Parks Department.
The vote on number forty-two is today. There is an amendment of the whole. Ms. Johnson, you're recognized.
That was from the previous not clearing of the queue.
Okay, thank you. There's no further lights. Is there a motion?
Second.
Motion and a second. Roll call.
Roe.
Yes.
Bagley.
Aye.
Harding.
Yes.
Hug.
Yes.
Johnson.
Yes.
Melton.
Yes.
Mr. President.
Yes.
Motion passed seven to zero. Item forty-three, an ordinance levying a special tax assessment for Reed's Group twenty-twenty-four dash zero-two is amendment of the whole requested by the Parks Department.
The vote on item number forty-three is today, also an amendment of the whole.
Second.
Motion and a second. Roll call.
Roe.
Yes.
Bagley.
Aye.
Harding.
Yes.
Hug.
Yes.
Johnson.
Yes.
Melton.
Yes.
Mr. President.
Yes.
Motion passed seven to zero. Item forty-four, a resolution to approve the appointment of John Henderson to the Airport Authority Board.
Public hearing and vote on number forty-four is today. Proponents, please. Seeing none, any opponents. Public hearing is closed.
Move to approve.
Motion and a second to approve. Roll call.
Roe.
Yes.
Bagley.
Aye.
Harding.
Yes.
Hug.
Yes.
Johnson.
Due to what we just experienced, no, no, nothing to do with the appointees, but my answer is no.
No.
I do not have a boss here other than myself. I am a city council representative. No one tells me what to do.
It's a yes or no when it's roll call. Melton.
Yes.
Mr. President.
Yes.
Motion passed six to one. Item forty-five, a resolution to approve the reappointment of Eric Butler to the Airport Authority Board.
Public hearing and vote on number forty-five is today. Proponents, please. Seeing none, any opponents. Public hearing is closed. Mr. Harding.
Second.
There's a motion and a second to approve. No further lights. Roll call.
Roe.
Yes.
Bagley.
Aye.
Harding.
Yes.
Hug. Johnson.
Concerned about equity.
We need a yes or no during roll call vote.
Concerned about equity on these boards.
Melton.
Yes.
Mr. President.
Yes.
Johnson.
Concerned about equity.
So, Ms. Johnson, you need to pressure light if you want to speak to the item rather than when we're voting.
But not when we're in roll call vote.
Concerned about equity on these boards.
We're in roll call.
My answer is no. And again, I would ask that my colleague, Mr. Harding, refrain from calling me out of order. That's not his job.
Next item, please.
Item forty-six, a resolution to approve the reappointment of Diane Durin to the MECA Board of Directors.
Public hearing and vote on number forty-six is today. Proponents, please. Seeing none, any opponents. Public hearing is closed.
Move to approve.
Second.
Motion and a second to approve. Are there any, any further lights that wish to come on at this time? Ms. Johnson, you're recognized.
Again, I'm going to be in opposition of this board appointment because there is a concern regarding the number of board appointees that has been made over and over again, and it is not in reflection to the number of people, the various individuals that, that we serve in this community. The board makeup is a question that I've asked over and over again. I've even asked that these board appointees come to represent themselves in front of city council so that I can ask a questions to arrive at a destination point to answer those concerns. And yet, again, just like we experienced a few minutes ago, the obstruction of justice continues to unfold. So, unfortunately, I will not be able to support this. While this may be a good candidate, I'm not able to support this until we address board makeup.
Thank you. There's no further lights. There was a motion and a second to approve. Roll call.
Roe.
Yes.
Bagley.
Aye.
Harding.
Yes.
Hug.
Yes.
Johnson.
No.
Melton.
Yes.
Mr. President.
Yes.
Motion passed six to one. Item forty-seven, a resolution to approve the reappointment of David Levy to the Omaha Housing Authority.
Public hearing and vote on number forty-seven is today. Proponents, please.
Louis, Humana, is twenty-seven oh nine Dewey Avenue. I support Mr. Levy retaining his position. I think that it would be incumbent on the, the council to review how you decide who's gonna be appointed to which board, any board, any committee that you have oversight. And once you do that review, then you consider your concerns and then bring legislation forward so that you can put it on the city codes. That's one thing that all seven of you were voted to do as your jobs, that you would look at city codes, understand the processes, and make change or not. Not to obstruct each other, but to do the city business. So, I think that if appointments such as a housing, Omaha Housing Authority is an issue for you, that you bring forward changes to the processes and decide what, what's the best course of action. Thank you.
Thank you. Any other proponents to number forty-seven? Seeing none, any opponents?
Thank you. Larry Stewart, five oh one five Lafayette Avenue, Omaha, six eight one three two. I'm opposed to it, just to be opposed to it. I'm more opposed to what may be violations of the Open Meetings Act as well as the treatment of human beings in this chambers. Number one, I can hear perfectly well in the morning, Mr. Fester, so I cannot hear in the afternoon, the same person is at the operating there. So, it makes me wonder, do you intentionally turn down the volumes of the microphone? Juanita, maybe you weren't speaking into the microphone. I had a hard time hearing you. And the other thing is it's very fun to watch your, you guys' treatment of Juanita and your expression on your faces. It looked like a bunch of ultras sitting on a fan. It looked like a bunch of ultras sitting on a fence waiting for that mouse to run by. I've been treated similar to that, and I've been referred to as I walked back to my seat or sat down by Mr. Harding, for one. In fact, I got a letter from a guy that said, oh, we overheard the microphone, say, we don't like that guy. So when are you going to stop treating people, including your own members, like that? Shake your head and make your comments. But you are violating every constitutional right that we ever had, including Ms. Johnson. And one time, I complained about the Open Meetings Act at one of your mini meetings that you didn't refer to, and you had a little lawyer up there chase me down outside to say, do we have to get the security people in here after you?
There you are off topic at this point.
Talk about targeting.
All right. Any other opponents to number forty-seven, the appointment to OHA?
Sherman Wells, 4718 Kansas Avenue. I am a opponent to anybody being appointed to OHA.
Chairman, I don't believe the overhead's going to work today.
It's not going to work today?
Yeah.
Okay. Because I kind of wanted to have you see the words of the Board of Commissioners about the board. But before I get into that, too, I just want to say that, yeah, man, your behavior is out of control, the way you talk to her. I don't like that at all. And that's why I said, who you think you're talking to? You know, you got to respect people. You can disagree, but it's a respect level. Okay? That's a woman we talking about. But for, I think with David Levy, I disagree with his appointment, for one, because on the website, it talks about the commissioners providing leadership and oversight, but I haven't seen no leadership and oversight in OHA. When we just had a meeting with OHA and the community and nobody from OHA showed up, they actually canceled like ten minutes before the meeting was supposed to start. So how do you have care or oversight or anything as far as you doing your job if you can't even come and sit and listen to the citizens that live in your units? It's public housing. It was a public meeting. Nobody could come? Nobody? One person from OHA? They didn't show up. And I also think it should be a conflict of interest with him being on the board because he's partners with Baird &amp; Homes, and that's the law firm OHA pay about $200,000 a year to represent him. So here we go with the same old games, and I'm looking at this council. I know you kind of knew, so you don't know, Colonel, but they, I mean, it's hard for me to understand why unless it's just some big game y'all playing that you're just appointing people and not holding them to the fire of what the job description says they're supposed to do. Time after time again, they just employ it as a body but not fulfilling the job duty. So even though I know y'all going to go ahead and do it, I just wanted it to be on the record that we recognize the games. And I would appreciate it if we started taking North Omaha more serious and the concerns of the citizen, because y'all work for the people, not for yourself and your self-interests.
Thank you. Any other opponents to number forty-seven? Seeing none, public hearing is closed. Mr. Begley, you're recognized.
Thanks, Mr. President. Some thoughts I put into the reappointment here of Mr. Levy. In December, on or around the 10th of December in 2021, there was a meeting at the OHA Board regarding the jobs of eighteen men and women that were employees of the Omaha Housing Authority. And it was a call from various labor leaders, a couple of the state senators, former state senator Chambers was one of them, Senator McKinney, former president of the Omaha Federation of Labor was there, and others. And it was an OHA Board meeting regarding the dignity of those eighteen workers. And they were bargaining with the union that represents local 251, and they ended up, and they're essential workers, the work they do for oftentimes the poorest of the poor that live in these various locations. And this was at a time where we're going through a pandemic, and it was Christmas. And I offered public testimony along with the others there that day in respect to the dignity of those men and women, some of them that had been employees of OHA for thirty years. Through no fault of their own, they arrived at that fateful day back in December 2021 where they were let go of their jobs, and I think maybe less than a handful of them maybe got positions elsewhere in OHA. So I'm going to vote no on this appointment today, not because Mr. Levy isn't qualified. I, like many of us, we get the agenda and we check it out on Thursday, and I go through the resume, and he's well qualified. He's got great credentials. But this is a philosophical thing from where I come from, where you represent the dignity of the workers, and through the collective bargaining process, it was unfortunate at that time that the majority of these eighteen men and women lost their jobs. So my issue, again, isn't with Mr. Levy. It's just a philosophical disagreement I had with how OHA treated those workers. And so, again, a good resume, but I'm respectfully voting no on this appointment here for the nomination today, Mr. President. Thank you.
Thank you. I don't see any further lights. Is there a motion?
Had a light on the floor.
There is no light, but if you'd like to speak, you want to press your button, I'll get you in the queue.
That's technology. It's a wonderful thing. Mine's showing that I'm lit up.
Okay. Ms. Johnson, you're recognized.
Once again, I am concerned about committee appointments as it relates to diversity, equity, and inclusion. This may not be important for other sections of Omaha, Nebraska, such as West Omaha, but in the district that I serve where we have been left out on a number of occasions. Something has to change. The movement that has happened throughout this meeting today illustrates the clear disregard to people of color. It's illustrated by the lack of respect for me. It's illustrated by the lack of respect for how things are done and decisions are made for North Omaha. We have a streetcar that is en route to be unveiled very soon, yet public transportation in North Omaha, east of Omaha, has been failing in a big way in terms of providing adequate, sufficient public transportation to those that are unfortunate to get to high-paying jobs. But we proud ourselves on continuing to revamp the Number Two Line or the Orbit Line, now the Streetcar Line. And yet, we have so many people in our community that have no way of getting from point A to point B simply because we fail to address this public transportation situation in a real way, similar to my echoes of concerns about the bidding process, my echoes of concern about board makeup. These things are all related, all related. And until we address these concerns, our urban core will not attract and retain use because they don't have the same problem that we have. Thank you.
Thank you. No further lights. Is there a motion on number forty-seven? There's a motion in a second to approve. Roll call.
Roe. Begley. Harding. Hug. Johnson. Melton. Mr. President.
Yes.
Motion passed four to three. Item forty-eight, an ordinance to approve a ten-year pricing service agreement with Black Hills Energy for the transportation of natural gas to the Papillion Creek Water Resource Recovery Facility.
The public hearing on number forty-eight is today. Proponents, please. Seeing none, any opponents? Public hearing is closed.
Item forty-nine, an ordinance to approve a streetscape maintenance agreement with the Omaha Performing Arts Society for the site at 12th and Dodge Streets.
Public hearing on number forty-nine is today. Proponents, please. Seeing none, any opponents? Public hearing is closed.
Item fifty, an ordinance to approve a streetscape maintenance agreement for the Square Apartment Site at 3001 Levenworth Street.
Public hearing on number fifty is today. Proponents, please. Seeing none, any opponents? Public hearing is closed.
Item fifty-one, an ordinance to approve an amendment to the streetscape maintenance agreement for the Hartwood Preserve Development.
Public hearing on number fifty-one is today. Proponents, please.
Excuse me, Joe Flaxbeard Lampert Nielsen, 14710 West Dodge Road, here to answer any questions they might have on agenda items fifty-one and fifty-three. Thank you.
Thank you. Any other proponents? Seeing none, any opponents? Public hearing is closed.
Item fifty-two, an ordinance to approve a non-exclusive public road license agreement with ALO Communications LLC.
Public hearing on number fifty-two is today. Proponents, please.
Good afternoon, Mr. President, members of the Omaha City Council. My name is Sean Trout, address 330 South 21st in Lincoln, Nebraska, 68510. Just a brief comment and then happy to answer any questions for you. I'm the Director of Public and Private Partnerships for ALO Communications, a Nebraska-based fiber-optic internet provider to the home and business company. ALO is a privately-held twenty-year-old company born out of Imperial, Nebraska, that has grown to more than thirteen hundred employees, one hundred and forty thousand customers in thirty-six communities in Nebraska, Colorado, and Arizona. That growth continues to be based on our four core values of always being honest, local, exceptional, and hassle-free. Although we currently do not have any plans to build out our network within the city of Omaha, we do have active projects in Bellevue, Gretna, Papillion, and La Vista. With the asymmetrical boundaries of the Omaha city limits, there will likely be situations where the right-of-way access will be needed for us to complete connections between those aforementioned communities. When those rights of ways are necessary, aside from following the prescribed permitting and regulation processes within the city of Omaha, we will also follow our own significant communication process with the area businesses and residents who may be impacted so that they know what to expect and who to contact should they have any questions or concerns. I would like to thank the city of Omaha staff for their proactive communication in reaching out regarding the timeline and application process for this right-of-way access. That type of interaction with city staff is certainly refreshing. Thank you for your time today and your consideration of this ordinance and agreement. I'd be happy to answer any questions you may have.
Thank you. Any other proponents today? Seeing none, any opponents?
Larry Store, 501-5 Lafayette Avenue, Omaha 68132. I'm against it because I'm beginning to get concerned about how many different communications companies we have in Omaha, how many different fiber companies we have in Omaha. I thought I had fiber. I'm not sure I do. But I'm also concerned about the interference of some of these microwave towers going up and whether or not they have spy cameras on them and red light cameras or speeding cameras. There's all this kind of stuff talked about but never explained to the citizens. I don't hear anything about it, and I'm watching news all the time. I listen to radio all the time, talk radio, KFAB. I hear nothing about it. I don't hear the city explaining any of it. So what do we need? Another fiber whatever company in Omaha and in what area? Do you really expect the citizens to have the time to come down here to find out or to go online and try to find out and then try to read through the legal language on everything? So why don't you explain it here today while you have an opportunity? You got TV cameras here, news companies, and they can explain it. Maybe it's at variance with what the city people want, and we, the people, pay your salaries. We people elect you, and you're supposed to work for us. Thank you.
Thank you. Any other opponents today? Seeing none, public hearing is closed. Mr. Hug, you're recognized.
If I understood correctly what you said, you said, as you are stringing through the other communities outside of Omaha, you may be using the right-of-ways in Omaha.
That's correct.
Okay. The only thing I'm going to ask, and I'm asking as an individual, as a councilman, is make sure when you are using the right-of-way in Omaha and your subcontractors and contractors have to interact with residences' backyards, make sure they're notifying those residents ahead of time. Recently, we've had, I had a couple of complaints where a resident had contractors running around their yard. They had no knowledge of it, what's going on, and it took a little time to sort it out. So I believe your company will do an excellent job in taking care of that, but I'm going to ask you, dot the i's and cross the t's and make sure it gets done, please.
Absolutely. Councilman, I appreciate the comments. We do have, as I mentioned, an extensive communication program that involves door hangers to those areas that we're working in well ahead of the construction part as well as during the process in case they may have missed that. But you're right, and it's one of the things that we built out in Lincoln, Nebraska, is kind of our flagship for our size. It's our largest community, and so we have a long history of how to communicate and how to clean up any issues that we have as well.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Begley.
Thanks, Mr. President. Sean, thanks for coming down today, and I appreciate your due diligence on, I wrote down, you said, communication process that you'll have contacts with concerns. So first, welcome to the outskirts of Omaha, I guess. Maybe one day you'll be in here, but one thing you can steal and make your own, you can pretend it's your idea. I've learned this through MetroNet and Google Fiber, amongst others, in Omaha, and I work for the Omaha Public Power District. I like the idea of those door hangers, but also you can steal the idea of those yard darts, I think they're called. Those are very good, and also even at the end of the neighborhoods that you're in, if you put a sign there that says, "Call Sean Trout," is that your last name?
Correct.
Or whoever your contact is, I can tell you, it'll go so much better just for your company, and you guys probably maybe already do that, but Councilman Hug was correct that anytime you can avoid those things because of communication, makes it easier on us if you ever come to Omaha, but also the customers you want to serve that they'll say, hey, this company was great. I knew they were here. They put the yard dart or the door hanger with John Smith or Jane Doe. I always pick on them, but if their name's on that card, that's ninety-plus percent of reassurance that if I got an issue in my yard, and I read your twenty-six-page handout, I think it was 2.6, deals with the issues of right-of-ways that are torn up in people's properties. You guys will make it equal to what it was and work on that.
Exactly.
So you can comment on it if you want to, but if you want to steal those ideas, it's great, but I think that communication piece, again, even if it's outside our districts, if you ever come here, that's an easy business model to follow for communication with constituents and customers. So thanks for coming down today. I appreciate it.
Absolutely. Councilman, thank you, and absolutely take any ideas back to the team. You're right, we aim to make it equal, if not better, the way we approach it. Again, we've had a number of situations to deal with and learn from during Lincoln and the other thirty-five communities that we built out in, and I think we do a fantastic job. That exceptional and local presence is very important to us. Reputation is critically important to us. It's not part of this process and this right-of-way access application, but it is public knowledge. We are the construction partner for Google Fiber in Omaha, so they selected us out of, it's the only time they've gone outside their core operation and selected an outside party because of our reputation of how we approach construction, and that communication piece is a key part of that, but I appreciate that very much.
Thank you. Ms. Melton.
Well, yeah, I guess what I was really impressed about is your company based out of Imperial, Nebraska. I think that is incredibly exciting and great for our state.
I think that is incredibly exciting and great for our state because that's pretty rare. They are mostly these big fiber companies, and by the way, competition is great. That's how, the more competition we have, that's what brings down prices. We don't want government controlling prices. We want the private market to do that. I think that's one of the principles of our country, but I also believe and have great faith that because your company is based out of Imperial, Nebraska, you're going to provide Nebraska standards, which means you're going to make sure people know that you're coming, and you're going to, if you do anything to their property, you're going to make it right and return it to the way it is because
Right.
We're family, we're friends, right? It's right out of Imperial, and so that's the Nebraska way. So I guess I was just, I just wanted to comment and make it clear that I'm just really excited that there was a company that grew out of Imperial, and I think it is really important. We have Omaha, we have a lot of competition coming with fiber, but Bellevue, La Vista, Papillion, some of our neighbors that we care about, they don't necessarily have as many that are coming into Omaha, so I think it's great that they're going to be able to share in some of that market competition as well.
Right.
And I appreciate you coming to the council meeting today to talk to us about it.
Absolutely, my pleasure, and you're right, and we appreciate those comments. Brad Moline is our president, CEO, and founder, born and raised in Imperial, and spends a lot of time between Lincoln and Imperial. That's a long drive on the interstate, but he does it a lot, over twenty years, and you're right, we're all neighbors, and we live here, and that's our local aspect of how we do things, and we want to make sure we're doing it right.
All right. Well, thank you. Appreciate it.
My pleasure.
Thank you. No further lights. Next item.
Item fifty-three, an ordinance to approve a major amendment to a mixed-use district development agreement for West Farm located southwest of one hundred and forty-fourth Street and West Dodge Road. Planning Board and Planning Department recommend approval.
Public hearing on number fifty-three is today. Proponents, please.
Joe Flaxbeard, again, one four seven one zero West Dodge Road. Got the address right that time, just here for any questions.
You slipped that by me the first time, huh?
Yeah.
Thanks for correcting that. Any other proponents on number fifty-three? Seeing none, any opponents? Public hearings closed.
Item fifty-four, an ordinance to approve an agreement between the OCVB and Simple View Inc. for the Visit Omaha website.
Public hearing on number fifty-four is today. Proponents, please.
Deborah Ward, Omaha Convention and Visitors Bureau, one twenty South Thirty-First Avenue. Just a quick overview, Simple View provides us with tourism-specific software that we utilize to run our website, safeguard the confidentiality of meeting and convention and event bids, collect data for economic impact information and sales strategies, and also provide local hotels, venues, restaurants, and tourism attractions, a valued online promotional tool. I might add that there's no price increase from the last time we negotiated this three years ago.
Thank you. Any other proponents today? Seeing none, any opponents? Public hearings closed.
Item fifty-five, an ordinance to accept the quote from Axon Enterprise Inc. for the purchase and installation of camera systems for twenty-two police vehicles for the Omaha Police Department.
Public hearing on number fifty-five is today. Proponents, please. Seeing none, any opponents? Public hearings closed.
Item fifty-six, an ordinance to approve an agreement with the Nebraska State Probation District for a in the amount of sixteen thousand eight hundred thirty-two dollars and to authorize funding from the city of Omaha's fiscal year 2021 Project Safe Neighborhoods Grant.
Public hearing on number fifty-six is today. Proponents, please. Seeing none, any opponents? Public hearings closed.
Non-action items, items fifty-seven through eighty-five do not require public hearing or city council consideration at this meeting, but will be placed on a future agenda for public hearing and or vote. The reason for non-action is noted after the item on the agenda, as well as the date the item is expected to appear on the agenda for consideration.
Is there a motion to adjourn?
Motion to adjourn.
Motion on the second. Roll call.
Roe, Bagley, Harding, Hug, Johnson, Melton. Mr. President.
Yes.
Motion passed six to one. Meeting is adjourned at three thirteen.